Figured there was nothing and we lost, we didn't realize.
Good evening. Uh, clock shows 6:00 PM, so we're going to go ahead and call the December 8th meeting of the Planning Commission to work. Uh, could I get a roll call please? David Randolph?
Here.
Jeffrey Byer?
Here.
Amy Morris?
Here.
Craig Bowman?
There.
Scott Weston?
John Brack?
Here.
We have a quorum. Uh, so at this time, we're to go ahead and begin moving through the agenda. Uh, we have item three, which is a consent consent agenda for approval for that. We have items one A through one E. Uh, if we can get a motion on the consent agenda, consideration and appropriate action related to the request for approval of the consent agenda, uh, is open to the commissioners. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
David Randolph?
Yes.
Jeffrey Byer?
Yes.
Amy Morris?
Yes.
Craig Bowman?
Yes.
John Brack?
Yes.
All right, with consent agenda approved, we're gonna move on to the other agenda items. We're gonna provide some instructions to the audience and the citizens that are here regarding the items that we're gonna cover this evening. May I say?
Sure. Thank you all for coming this evening. We have a format that is a little bit different from city council if you've ever attended a city council hearing. The, um, items will move forward from this point as reading of the agenda by the chair. And in this case, we have Vice Chair Brown this evening presiding over this meeting. There will be a staff presentation. At that time, I will, uh, make a presentation. I am Marcy Hilton, the city planner for the city of Jinks. The, um, once the presentation is made, the planning commission has the opportunity to ask me questions directly. I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. And if there's something that I don't know, the applicant is present, then at that time, they generally will be prepared to answer it. The second part is the, um, applicant presentation. So, once I give my presentation, the chair will ask if the applicant is present. If they are present and want to speak, they may. If they do not want to speak, they do not have to. If they feel like that staff's covered everything and they have nothing else to add, that they're certainly welcome to not speak. If they do, they have 10 minutes. We do have a timer that will come up on the board so that everybody can see it. The speaker will be notified when their time has expired. The presentation is limited to the agenda item as presented on the agenda. So, when, um, someone gets up to speak, uh, one of the applicants, they can only talk about the agenda item. So, question and answer from planning commission, and there's no specified time limit. The, um, third portion of this hearing is the public comment and floor. So, at, after the applicant presentation, the floor is open to the public. The sign-in sheets will be received and your name will be called off. If you want to speak, you may come forward. Please state your name and your address, and then speak about the item. You'll have, uh, the item that you wanna talk about that is on the agenda. You have three minutes to speak. The planning commission does reserve the right to allow more time, and the speaker will be notified when the time has expired. It'll be pretty easy to know because it's kind of a countdown clock. There is no sharing of minutes. The public comment is limited to the agenda item as presented on the agenda. Item number four, the chair will close the floor. He'll make sure that, um, he'll, he'll give everyone the opportunity to speak. We do ask that, uh, comments are not repeated. If you have something to say and your neighbor has already said it, please do not repeat it. You have something new to add to the conversation, you're welcome to share that. The, um, let's see. The applicant has a 10-minute pre-response time. The speaker will notify them when that time has expired. And the last thing will be a call for a motion, uh, and ask for comments. So, the planning commission at that point, there is one time for the public to speak. The floor is open. When the floor is closed, the public does not get another opportunity to speak. Period. That is how that is. So, with that being said, we can move on.
All right, thank you for those instructions. Uh, item three on the agenda is, uh, JZ 22-683 is unchanged from CG Commercial General to CS Commercial Shopping. General location is 418 West Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Brown. This is an application for JZ 22-683. We are calling this Roy's Chicken because that is what it is. We have an application to, and this, uh, particular project has already broken ground. They are located at 418 West Main. They have a parent company in Kaweta. I've been there a couple of times. It's outstanding, and I think it's gonna be a great asset to our main street and to the citizens and the visitors that come to Jinks. There are lots 10, 11, and 12 of block 44 are the lots that they are creating this site. If you look on page 58 of 80, you'll see the, uh, chart. One of the primary reasons we are rezoning, they got into the design elements and realized that in the Unified Development Ordinance, there's a minimum and a maximum setback for Commercial General. And this site is small, and that it is not very deep, and they needed relief from that. So, we had to rezone to Commercial Shopping. With that being said, staff does recommend approval of JZ 22-683 for Roy's Chicken.
Do you have any questions from the commissioners?
Does this impact the setbacks for the road, potential road expansion in the future or anything with this change? Uh, it seems like it doesn't, but okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Is the applicant present? Would you like to present?
No, I'm fine with evidence presented.
Okay, that's fine. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this particular agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve JZ 22-683.
Second.
On the motion, wait. Run, George. Oh, geez. No worries. Uh, David Randolph?
Yes.
Jeffrey Byer?
Yes.
Amy Morris?
Yes.
Craig Bowman?
John Brack?
Yes. Okay, so that is approved. Next item on the agenda is JZ 22-684. Zone change from RS3 Single Family to CS Commercial General. Location, 411 West A Street.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Brown. This item is a rezoning for what was currently an RS3 lot. This is adjacent to Mojo's Coffee Shop. This has become a staple for people who visit the downtown. Uh, every time I go in there, it's bustling, and I'm really excited for their future. You may also notice that, um, it's challenging sometimes to find a parking place. And, um, they will be purchasing that, the lot that we are rezoning and building a parking, uh, it'll be struck, please, ground parking, surface parking, that's what it is. It'll be surface parking, and it'll provide that, uh, extra space. I, they might end up with an area for outdoor service and/or storage, I think. I don't, I don't know that their plans are fully developed for what they wanna do in the future, but, um, staff has talked about this multiple times. We've talked about, um, some of the other things going on in that area. Staff does recommend approval of JZ 22-684 to rezone the, uh, the parking lot adjacent to Mojo's from RS3 to CS.
Any questions from the commissioners on this item? Is the applicant present? Would you like to present?
Okay.
Is there anyone present that would like to comment on this particular agenda item? If you'll come forward, state your name and address, please, for the record. I wanna make sure that microphone is on as well. It is.
Um, Lori McLean. I live directly north of that property. And, um, I'm definitely for, I'm pro-small business. My boys had a landscaping company that operated from that property. Um, but the city of Jinks showed that because it wasn't zoned commercial. And they said it was, there were too many cars. And so, I'm kinda confused now how this is my access to my garage, and my driveway is through there. And so, I'm confused that now eight to 10 feet behind my property, we're gonna have a stream of cars coming and going, and that's okay? And so, I'm concerned for my privacy and my safety because that is my access to get to my garage. And so, I don't have enough information to feel comfortable with this. I think it's too open, and I'm, I'm just not comfortable with it for that reason, because I'm concerned for my privacy and my safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Uh huh.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the site? Bring it back to the commissioners. Uh, any thoughts on the comments?
Just to that concern, would approving this impact access, you know, to, to her property or anything? Can you speak to that, Marcy?
Sure. The, um, alleyway runs north of Mojo's and north of this property. So, this is, uh, has A Street on the south and the alley on the north. And they would have to meet any requirements of the UDO. So, any type of screening or, um, buffering, they are required to meet those standards. And we have talked through that. So, the alleyway will not be obstructed at any time. It cannot be obstructed. It's a public right-of-way. So, outside of that, I don't see any reason why it would in, uh, impair the access from the north.
Do you have a question? Does your, you're accessing your garage. Does the door to your garage face the south?
Yes.
It does face the south. So, you access it through the alley?
That's the alleyway, yes. Her, um, it's a residential lot. She most certainly can access, uh, her property from the alley.
Any other comments from the commissioners? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to approve JZ 22-684.
Second. Motion? David Randolph?
Yes.
Jeffrey Byer?
Yes.
Amy Morris?
Yes.
Craig Bowman?
Yes.
John Brack?
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda, which I expected everyone to hear for, is PA 22-25, a request for comprehensive land use map amendment for business park to high-intensity single family. General location, Highway 75 and 111, 111th Street. Uh, before I move on officially in this, I just wanna make one public comment, um, since Habitat for Humanity is involved with this. For those that are not familiar with Habitat for Humanity, there's a lot of misconceptions about what Habitat for Humanity does, um, and, and the homes that they work with, the families that they work with. Um, Habitat for Humanity believes that everyone everywhere should have, uh, a healthy, affordable place to live. And I wanna thank Habitat for Humanity for the work that they do in the community, uh, Green Country, and then also they are, uh, also a good member of the community with Restore Facility. So, just wanna acknowledge them and thank them for the work that they do. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and move on to our presentation.
Yes, thank you. So, um, this is PA 22-25. This is a comprehensive plan amendment. It is not a rezoning. It, um, was not advertised as a rezoning, and I think there's been a little bit of confusion about that. This is a part of the comprehensive plan that was updated, uh, for the city of Jinks about two years ago, two, two and a half years ago. And, um, at that time, the comprehensive plan said, "We think that multifamily is a good idea adjacent to Highway 75 because of, um, the access going to the north. It makes it complicated if you try to get a commercial business in there." And we've heard from several people who have commercial businesses in that area, and they're, they become very frustrated with the lack of access that is, um, available in other intersections along Highway 75. The, um, at the time, the consultants made that recommendation. This planning commission reviewed the land use map, and there were, uh, really no deviations from the recommendation. At that time, and still, there is an approved zoning on the property and a planned unit development. Since that time, the, um, staff did a comprehensive review of the concrete, of the comprehensive plan land use map and made multiple changes to the map. We did that in April of this past year. So, we went in and we, there were a couple of areas that we knew, um, probably needed to be adjusted, and this was one of the areas. The city has limited land available along Highway 75, and as you know, all cities in, uh, the state of Oklahoma rely on retail sales tax. So, it's very important to the city to capture as much of that as possible. Then, um, any type of opportunity for daytime, uh, traffic to the city as far as jobs, and, um, especially that area, we thought, you know, this could be, it's not so popular all the time. We just haven't been able to get a lot of interest. Um, they have not come to us for commercial, but we thought maybe business park. And we had a lot of land dedicated for multifamily. Now, we had Business Park at 121st and multifamily at 111th. And we said, "Why don't we take this at 111th and allow multifamily down at 121st and put some Business Park, um, opportunities at 111th?" And that was approved by planning commission and city council in April of 2022. Now, let me back up a little bit. For over a year, I've had, uh, conversations, and it's not just me. There's been multiple staff members and a couple of council members who have had conversations with, um, Boomtown, which is an arm of Habitat for Humanity. They have owned the property for many, many, many years, and the, um, the PUD and zoning that is on it was originally for a hospital, and then it had a portion that was dedicated to, um, a clinic. And the property is, right now, the PUD has never been developed. As you all know, a hospital was built in Glenpool, and really, the opportunity and possibility of a hospital being built at this site is highly improbable. I probably would say is improbable. So, Habitat owns the property. They've wondered what they should do with it. They have ideas. They have, uh, demographic data and studies. And, um, as the Vice Chair mentioned earlier, they see a need in the community of Jinks. So, they came to me and said, "We would like to, uh, develop this property." And we went through the process and the conversation, what would development look like? This is the same process we go through with everybody who comes to the city. Uh, if you come to do Roy's Chicken, we have a pre-development meeting. If you wanna build a, um, parking lot for Mojo's, we have a pre-development meeting. And we talk about, what is the zoning? What does the comprehensive plan say? What is the access? What is the water utilities, et cetera? Are there any other recoverances? Same process, same conversation. So, we looked at the site, and, um, at the, at the beginning, they, um, really could have pursued it. And they said, "We really want to be good neighbors, so we want to, to, um, make sure that everyone's on board." We had a lot of conversations for several reasons. It didn't go that direction immediately. The city did amend the comprehensive plan for Business Park, and that is how we got here tonight, because they asked, um, for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to go back to, uh, they did not ask for multifamily. They, um, I suggested high-intensity single family, which is a deviation from the original one, uh, prior to, or during the, the actual original adoption. So, that's probably all clear as mud. Um, but the point is, they are interested in building, um, they have an idea of what they would like to do. The conversation tonight, so I, I gave you the background, a general background, but the conversation tonight is really about the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is a recommendation. It's a guide, and it says, it has different language and different recommendations. So, in general, the comprehensive plan says, "Along Highway 75, it is best if the city can capture and dedicate it, or dedicate and capture retail or business park type sets." Excuse me. So, with that being, um, the case, I did recommend, um, in April to change it to Business Park. And because of that, I also recommended that this, uh, request be denied. And that is my staff report. The question that the planning commission has to consider and that the, um, city council will have to consider is, "Should this area of Jinks be dedicated to residential uses or business uses?" So, tonight, even though this one is a little teeny bit more complicated because we don't often have a project sitting, uh, waiting in the wings. Usually, when we do comprehensive plan amendments, there's just a map in front of us and usually raw land, or we might know an area is going to redevelop, and if it does, how would it best redevelop? So, when the planning commission makes their decision tonight, they're going to make it based on, if and when a project is done on this land, should it be residential use or should it be Business Park use? And that's the only thing that they can consider in this conversation because it is not a rezoning. It is a comprehensive plan land use map amendment, based on the recommendations and policies of the comprehensive plan. Does that, does everybody understand? Okay. So, let me just go through some of the, the data. If you look on page 65 of your packet, the current zoning is Commercial General, and it has a PUD called PUD 77. That's a planned unit development. And for the sake of the audience, I will explain that you have a zoning, and then you have, if you have a planned unit development, that planned unit development overrules the book. So, here's my book. Okay, this is the zoning book. Now, I put a PUD on top of it. I don't need the book. I just go by the, the PUD. So, for this land, it does allow for medical uses, um, other things. It says that the original PUD said plans for more intensive use such as hospital, et cetera. And, um, there's a deed restriction, I believe, still on one parcel. If you go back before that, there was another PUD that was amended. So, the very original one was PUD 19. And at that time, it was zoned commercial shopping. So, you, for now, for many, many years, first it was commercial shopping with some plans, then it became Commercial General with more plans, a very intense use. A hospital is a very high intense use. It, um, was approved, and that was in, um, 2010. And some of the, some of the things that you could do on that land under the existing PUD included multifamily. So, by right, they could have built multifamily previously. So, what happened is, um, in, when we updated the code, the requirements for building something within a, an existing PUD, the PUD has to have been approved within the last couple of years. So, there's now a sunset on planned unit developments. This PUD was established in 2010, so that's 20, or 12 years. So, it has expired. So, they would have to start the whole process over. And the first step, go back to that pre-development meeting, the first step is, "Does your project align with the comprehensive plan?" It did align with the comprehensive plan until April. It no longer aligns with the comprehensive plan, and they are asking for, uh, to amend to the plan so that they can do the, um, the residential uses. Um, let's see. There's a little bit more history in there. Can you turn to page 66, please? Thank you. So, here you kinda see the comprehensive plan, um, process that we went through. See it highlighted. Then, if you go to the next page, this is a map of the general area. There's some really, uh, wild zoning out there. Part of where the church sits is industrial. Uh, part of where the church sits is multifamily. And then there are, uh, the cobblestone cottages up in the brown area. That one is a multifamily zoning. You go below that, everything below that is Commercial General. So, on page 67, down at the bottom, it talks about the actual comprehensive plan. And it says, "What are the contents of the Horizon Jinks comprehensive plan?" It, it talks about how you, what, uh, what is the comprehensive plan, what are the elements of it, et cetera. Then you go to the staff evaluation. It says, "The goal of a land use plan is to assist the city, including staff, as well as elected and appointed officials and local property owners in making future land use and development-related policy decisions. While the land use plan is specific enough to provide guidance on land use decisions, it is also flexible enough to allow for individual negotiations and the consideration of creative approaches to land development that are consistent with the overall policies and guidelines included in the comprehensive plan." Then it talks about the definition of Business Park, and, um, that's, the next to the last line says, "These areas are generally located along Highway 75, uh, in proximity to the Tulsa Tech Riverside Campus and Richard Lloyd Jones Jr. Airport, or adjacent to Kimberly Clark." So, this is taken, this is an exact, all of this information is in italics, and it's taken straight from the code. This is not something that I wrote. I just put the code, or it's not the code, it's the guide into your, um, packet. The regional commercial says that the city should ensure that new development of this type integrates the environmental features existing in the area as amenities and public gathering space. Sorry, I should've started again. The regional, uh, commercial land use designation is concentrated at the northern and southern interchanges of Highway 75 as well as at the riverfront. Again, saying that in general, we believe that the best place for a regional commercial entity is along Highway 75. In general, the best place for Business Park is along Highway 75 or, um, near the Riverside Airport or Kimberly Clark. Let's see. The, um, there's a little bit more information, all in italics. Things that I put in italics come straight from the source. They are not, um, my words. So, on page 69 of 80, it says, "Based on the adopted comprehensive plan language, recommending commercial and business development along Highway 75, staff does not recommend a land use map change for Business Park to high-intensity single family adjacent to Highway 75." And it talks about the amendment process. And, um, this was from April, the next picture. And then I did include, um, the, on page 72. It shows, um, in April, what it was amended. So, the, the underlying comprehensive plan shows residential on the east side of Douglas and Business Park on the west side of Douglas. And the east side was never amended. The next page shows what the original comprehensive plan was and what the approved, uh, PUD, or over the, so. And then the last one is on page 74. The request was amended to allow high-intensity single family. Um, again, there is a project waiting in the wings. The project itself is not for consideration tonight. It's just the, the question of residential versus Business Park. And, um, in this particular case, I did provide you the information, which they would, uh, like to do 35 rental units. That would be in the style of a townhome, and 48 senior rental units. And then on the east side, there would be 13 single-family residences and three duplexes, all owner occupied. If you look on page 75, that was from April, I did include some of the, um, background. At the time of the staff At the time of the staff report, when we got, when we went out, I only had a few emails. I also, I have additional emails, which I've given to the planning commission. And then the last one is the most recent. No, do you have any suggestions? Anyway. So those are the emails and other things. Do you have any questions for me? Is my recommendation clear?
Your recommendation is clear. Questions from the commissioners? Any questions on the recommendations? And what we're actually acting on? Do any of you have any questions? Would someone with the applicant like to present this evening? Please come forward. Say your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Walker. I'm the president and CEO of Green Country Habitat for Humanity. My address is 968 East 36th Place, Tulsa, Oklahoma, 7405. So yes, Commissioner Brown, I appreciate your comments. Everyone knows Habitat for Humanity and there's a lot of misconceptions. We don't give away homes. We don't take homeless people off the street and put them in a position where they're owning a home and have a mortgage. We have really evolved since I took over in 2015. We now play the role of starter home construction. When I began, the average cost of a habitat house was around $70,000. Today, we're approaching on $200,000. So the old adage of what affordable means has really kind of changed in the years. A lot of what we do now is more finance related than it has to do with construction. We're a bit of an anomaly as a habitat. We hardly use volunteers. This year, we'll complete close to 80 homes. We are focused right now almost exclusively in North Tulsa. And so all of our construction is built with professional contractors. And I think you'll see, hopefully. Is this available?
Yes.
For them? Does everybody have? Yeah, so you can go to that second slide. So the proposed development that we have thrown out is two sides. You have the east development, which is largely mirrored on the existing development, just immediately north. There's a gated community, some duplex, some quadplex. We kind of kept that flavor, moving it down. Those 13 duplexes and detached single family homes would all be owner occupied. On the west side, near the highway, a little less desirable than, than what's on the east, we modeled that out for rental. This is largely based on a $6 million development that we will be breaking ground on near north, near downtown Tulsa in 2023. This middle section, where you have the little triangle, we currently do not own that. This, all of these properties were conveyed to us in a real estate donation by the William K. Warren Foundation, so St. Francis. I will just mention, and we'll be happy to provide this, but as a parting gift and part of their donation, there are three pages of restrictive commercial covenants that come along with this property and will be conveyed to the next, whoever takes the property, we don't end up developing it. And it is quite detailed. So it does limit the types of businesses that will be able to ultimately be on this property moving forward. You can go to the next slide there. So on the left, that would be modeled after the rental townhomes. These units, I can tell you this, if we were selling them on the open market, if I was a private developer, this would be $300,000 townhomes. So we go way out of our way. A lot of what we do is buying the cost of things down. That's ultimately not what a borrower or a renter would be paying. And then the house on the right is very indicative of what we're currently constructing. Like I said, it's a starter home. This is where residential builders no longer build this price point of a house because there's no money to be made in. When you're operating on 10% to 20% profit margins, a $200,000 house, there's not a lot of profit in that. So while money was cheap, builders moved up the, up the continuum and started building 400, 500,000 dollar houses. You can go to the next one. Um, just a couple of things I want to point out. And this is where the misconceptions come in, who we actually serve and who we work with. Jeans is, is a little more affluent than obviously Tulsa, has a higher household income. But I want to draw your attention to that bottom, the employer pay information. So based on the available data, the average city of Jeans employee, the average employee of Jeans Public Schools and the average employee at Kimberly Clark would all qualify for our program. There's a lot of stigma around our program. We are not public housing. We don't give anything away. But it's just a good data point. A lot of people simply do not know that they are within our income guidelines. You go to the next, Brandon. So this is actually what we work off of. Everything is income based. So we can conceivably, albeit we can't do it anymore because of the price of the home, but we can work with families to make as little as $28,200 a year. We can go all the way up to where a household makes $127,000. It's hard to believe, but unfortunately, the way HUD has defined this, families that fall on these income barriers are considered cost burden when it comes to housing. So in the city of Jeans, we've got about 25% of the households that make $50,000 or less. So a quarter of Jeans population could conceivably qualify for our program. And when we decided to take this donation on, part of it was based on the comprehensive plan identifying that there was a lack of affordable housing and there was a need in the city of Jeans. So that was really why we took this on. And when it was, essentially the land use was multifamily and residential. So with commercial, we obviously are not in the commercial business, so we cannot develop it. But anyway, that's, we want to be good neighbors, as Marseille kind of conveyed. We certainly do not want to attempt to squeeze a swirpe egg around hole. And so we will obviously honor the decision by the planning commission. But that's what we've got. Any questions? I'm sorry, questions process.
So what kind of price point would you be looking at for the rentals?
So it would obviously, it would be a mix of market rate with our, so we have two nonprofits. Boomtown Development Company works with a higher income borrower and also holds all of our rental inventory. We can actually rent market rate. So within those 35 units, we could program it out where a third of those units are open market. So we'll charge market rate rents on those. The others, we artificially essentially match those rents to the incomes of the families. Like I said, it all goes back to that income chart. So if a family, you know, if $700 a month is 30% of your take home pay, we don't want to exceed that. So that would be a, an average rent. The houses, right now, that house that I showed you, we've got, we're, we're routinely getting appraisals between $175,000 and $205,000 on that house in North Tulsa. We build that in Jeans, that's probably a $230,000, $240,000 house.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Any discussion? Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for questions and comments. And we actually have a list of those that signed in. So I'll go down that list. Amy Ulrich. Okay, questions? Next is Erin and Carolyn. Morton? Morton? No questions? Okay. Gloria Klein? No questions?
Change your vote together.
Okay. Bobby, Bobby Dury? I'm butchering names this evening. No questions for Bobby? Okay. Y'all just wanted to go out for pieces this evening. Uh, let's see. Bart? Boaterly? Bart?
No.
No questions? How bad did I butcher your name?
No.
Okay. Oh, it's Boer, right? Thank you, thank you. Um, Miller did Linda Cameron? No questions? And the last one on the list was Cash Yaley? Cash? All right, no questions?
Well, it's, it's all pages.
That's it?
Oh, you got one. Tell you animal on your head.
All right, Jerry Hall?
That's me.
Jerry, please.
Um, my name is Jerry Hall. I live at 1100 Augusta Drive, Jeans, Oklahoma. And I, I would appreciate it if somebody would minimize the clock and then go back to the map if you could.
Which map?
Um, well, one of the big maps you put up with all the, that's not a map. Yeah, there we go. Okay. And I live right here and I live right here.
Yeah, be careful on that screen. Oh, there's Santa's.
I live right here and there was another map that showed a picture of a house just to the west of that. And I would like to see that map if you would put that back up as well. It was the gentleman's presentation. Now, when I bought this house in May of 2000, yes. I live right here. When I bought this house in May of 2014, I asked the Realtor to her face when I was in the house, what is this land behind me? Because one of my buying criteria for my home was, I want a green space behind me. And she looked at me in the eye, and her name is Brandy True. I want it for the record. And she told me that that property was reserved and it would never be built on. And my mistake was to believe her. And so then I later found out that St. Francis owned that property. Well, now I'm finding out that St. Francis doesn't own that property. I heard something tonight about May of 2010. I think when it was given over to Habitat. Another thing that I'm a little annoyed about tonight is one of the very first documents that was up there said that there were comprehensive, and you can scroll back if you want, there were comprehensive sessions with this entity and that entity and this organization and that organization. And I've lived in that house for eight years. And there's never been any indication to the citizens that live there. And by the way, I paid my property taxes today. Um, dropped them in the mail. There was never any indication until my neighbor here told me about the yellow sign. And I took a picture of it on November the 28th and notified our homeowners association. So I've been in this house eight years and I've never heard one single thing about it. That bothers me from a citizen, taxpayer, homeowner, taxpaying standpoint. Because now I find out, and I was really praying that whatever is coming up, and I really would appreciate a little bit more time because I waited eight years for this. Um, and maybe with parliamentary procedure?
We'll extend it.
Thank you. Uh, so this is really not fair to the, to the people that live in Augusta Green. And one other thing, I want to know what's going to happen. And this is an official question for the record. There's a creek behind me. There are trees behind me. There are trees over here. And I want to know what the developer has in mind for the creek? How's he going to build on top of that creek? Um, is there any kind of EPA recommendation or flood zone recommendation? Any kind of rules and regulations on that? Are they going to come and rip up trees? Am I going to be able to stand outside and look over my fence and take photos and videos of them coming in and climbing up those trees back there? I don't see any trees on that map right there. We live in a beautiful little neighborhood right now. And one other thing before I'm cut off is when they're building these properties, those builders, did they employ the actual workers? They're up on that roof and they are playing their radios as loud as they can possibly play them. So I want some, this is another official question. I want to know if noise is going to be allowed? If loud radio playing is going to be allowed? If loud music is going to be allowed? And so the trees, the creek, the noise, I'm, uh, I'm beside myself.
All right. Thank, thank you for your comments. Uh, just, and just as a reminder, the issue on the agenda tonight is not about the development process. It's not about what has been proposed or as far as the concept of what might be developed or what might be developed in the future. The, what's on the agenda tonight is, shall we amend the comprehensive, the land use map? And if the, the land use map is not changed, then anything to do with this would, would not be relevant tonight.
I know. But I've been in my house for eight years and this is the first I'm hearing this. And this may be my, my first and last shot to get my, to get my comments out into the public and on the record.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next we have Peter. Peter and Carrie. I'm not even going to try the last name.
Everything's good, Cooper. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next we have Carol.
Take a water if you're going.
No comments? Uh, Nanette Escudell?
Okay, so basic, oh, excuse me.
Please say your name.
Nanette, schedule 10913 Augusta Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, so your presenter with Habitat for Humanity, when he came in here and started talking about his rental things and that kind of thing, that has nothing to do with what you all are doing here. Is that correct?
That would be the later phase if the land use, if the land use is.
Now, he said a third of those rentals would go on market value and the rest of them would go on income value if, if in fact this whole thing developed. And he said that they would be income based. Like for instance, you could have a $300,000 unit in the regular market and people being paid, paying only $700 because it was based on their income. Is that my, do I understand that correct?
The concept is.
That would be the concept.
That's what I thought. Okay. So that isn't even compared to what we have at Augusta Green. Not even compared. And I want to ask each and every one of you, if you were in quote, your million dollar house and they came in and they said, okay, here we've got a million dollar house, but we've got somebody that really makes $28,000 and we're going to let them have a comparable million dollar house for $700 a month? What would you think about that? Put yourself in our place. Because they have the ability, once this goes along the road, they have the ability to make that happen. And even though we don't live in million dollar houses, we live in houses that we do not want the value to be downgraded because people don't want to live there with those houses that were developed or those rental properties that were developed. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you for your comments. Uh, we have Mr. Walker. We'll come back to you if we can. Vicky Jordan? Excuse me. Okay, very good. Uh, let's see. Ronan Tamara Sterling? Again, I'm apologizing if I butcher these names. Ronan Tamara? Okay. Carol Plasko?
Plasko.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I was signing an.
I thought I was signing an...
Okay, very good. You get a perfect attendance award. And then we've got Roger Graham. Roger. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm... Excuse me. I'm Roger Graham. Uh, my address is 11304 South Cleveland Avenue. My last word of question, uh, I'm the treasurer of the Homelands Association of Brightling Village, which is off the map a little bit, down to the south and to the east there. Uh, obviously, I want to express concern from the folks that live in my neighborhood about this development potentially. Um, so I want to express that, and I know there's a few folks here in attendance as well, I'm seeing a few. So just want to express that there is concern about the lowering of house value in our neighborhood. Um, I personally, I don't have enough, you know, empirical data to put in front of me and say, "Oh, this will happen exactly." So that's just, you know, more of anecdotal, but, um... My question is, you know, if this development does come to fruition, uh, is what kind of oversight is occurring in that neighborhood? It's not for me to say who can or cannot own a home. You know, hey, I've been in less than desirable financial situation myself. Then I got money, then I have kids, and that's a whole other story. Um, so no, so that was just my concern. Sorry, I don't say jokes in here. So that's one of my concerns that I want to express. And also, just to also point out that my wife has volunteered for Habitat in the past as well. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Okay, at this time, we'll bring it back to the commissioners. Probably seven other pages. Give us three pages.
Yes.
I'll give two.
I skipped a page. I apologize.
We have a third page. We're going to be calling. We roll for those not present. Uh, let's... Next we have Barna Hooper. Larry Hart?
Uh, no comment.
Brandeavor? Rachel Bryant? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Rachel Bryant, and I live at 10711 Masters Circle, which is the circle part up there, um, off of Augusta Drive. And I am the secretary of that HOA. And, um, one note that we just wanted to bring up is the definition or the note that you guys have listed for high-intensity, single-family homes is that the city should promote the development of this land use type in areas near higher intensity, multifamily, and non-residential uses. That does not really consist of where we are here. That is surrounded by neighborhoods and one church. So those are not high-intensity. Um, those are not non-residential uses. Um, so I just wanted to state that, like, if we do change to it, that goes against what you guys are saying that you want to support for that type of development. Um, and just in general, um, there's a good chunk of our neighborhood right there. But just expressing that we really hope that this does not move. I also have volunteered with Habitat for Humanity and agree that everyone should have affordable housing, but this is not the system according to what the city has stated in the plan of putting this high-intensity segment here. So that is all I have to say. Um, we just hope that it goes another way.
All right. Thank you for your comments. So Mr. Walker, lots of people have volunteered in the past to get them back on the list. Uh, next we have Teresa Baker. Okay, no? Greg Baker? Uh, Rob Sauer? Sauer, okay. Rob? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Rob Sauer. I live in Vicksby at 6902 East 115 Place. I was the developer of the Cobblestone Project in the back. And I want to, first of all, thank you guys. I've talked to a few of you. And, um, the City of Jinx has been a pleasure to work with in my experiences. Habitat for Humanity is a great organization. My personal profession, I've been in commercial real estate since 2003. I got over a billion in transaction experience. I've done a lot of development work. I moved back to Tulsa two years ago to tackle this project. My grandkids are all here, so we decided to settle back here and sort of semi-retire. I think this is a great project for a different location. To have highway frontage that at some point will have some commercial appeal is probably the highest and best use of it. And I commend the planning commission to, uh, the recommendation to deny this particular one. In fact, I'd love to chat with Habitat for Humanity, see if I could help them find another location that would even be willing to maybe participate with them in doing something that's good for the community. In my experience, when you're dealing with income-based housing, you need to have a lot more services in close proximity, more walking distance. And there's nothing available here to meet those demands. And it really doesn't reflect the neighborhood that it's located. And that's where you have a lot of, you know, concern by the neighbors. And, uh, but I just wanted to share with you, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys. You guys have been great to work with. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sauer. Andrew Reed?
No comment.
Okay. Pam McDaniel, McDon... McDon? Okay. Nathan Sisk?
Comment.
And David Kennel? Okay. Now, do we have any more hidden sheets?
No.
Okay. All right. At this time, again, we will bring it back to the commissioners for questions and feedback.
First of all, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I know you all have lives and are busy. Um, it helps us make better decisions with all of your input from the applicant and all of you, so thank you. Just some initial thoughts, and then let's talk a little more, but, uh... You know, legally, they don't have the right to do this now. When we went through the new comprehensive plan, and they hadn't done this project before, and they didn't do it within six months after that, that right was waived, and then we decided that we would swap that land too for sort of an appropriate adjustment. So, you know, which is, I guess, why they're requesting this change. We can't do this now. Um, it doesn't seem, you know, the comprehensive plan, just kind of thinking out loud, it's a guide. It's not binding, but I think it is, as lawyers say, persuasive authority, you know, yeah. But, you know, it doesn't strike me as sort of a high-intensity usage area. I think one of the speakers pointed out how there's not a lot of services nearby, so it doesn't seem like a great fit to me, but that's just me. Um, those are just some initial thoughts, but...
Marseille, I do have a question. So a business park is where Los Mariachis... I probably said that wrong. Is that a business park?
This, um, would not be considered a business park. It's more like business, well, something similar, I guess, could go in there. We do allow for warehousing in a business park.
What else do we allow for in a business park? Thank you.
The current zoning on it is commercial general, so even if a planned unit development expires, the underlying zoning does not expire. So, uh, notwithstanding the deed restrictions on the property, if someone came in and just wanted to do street zoning on the property, I can tell you what could be allowed. And most of it probably would be allowed in a business park. The idea of a business park was more like a MetLife campus or a State Farm campus where you have, like you have in East Tulsa, they have their 10, 20 acres, and you have, um, 300 employees, and they all arrive at the same place, and they do transactions and business there. You have places like, um, the area where Los Mariachis is, and that is, they have a combination of allowed uses. The 2900 West Main has very similar uses, so you could have a business in the front with warehousing in the back. That would be allowed in a business park. So not so much manufacturing, so you couldn't have an office and then a manufacturing, but you could have warehousing, which is actually a very high demand because of all the online, um, the way commerce is transacted now. It's very, very common to have a retail shop or a business shop or office shop in front with large storage area in the back. So in commercial general, I can just give you some of those. You could have, uh, by right, general services greater than 50,000 square feet, um, medical or dental office, professional office, a professional office above the ground floor, veterinary hospital. Let's see, a hotel, a bar, a brewery, um... Coffee shop, tea shop, winery, restaurant, restaurant fast casual, restaurant sit-down. Entertainment, less than 10,000, entertainment greater than 10,000, entertainment greater than 50,000 square feet. You could have a car wash, fuel cells, gas station with mini-mart, service station, um... You could have a medical marijuana dispensary, accessory buildings, accessory retail, accessory structures. Uh, residential above the ground floor, so you could potentially have lots of uses there. There are some criteria for that. Sorry. Indoor government uses, um... Convenience store, retail, less than 10,000, retail, greater than 10,000, uh, retail, greater than 50,000, a multi-tenant strip center, acute care center, commercial animal boarding.
That's good. I guess, I guess my question, or my comment is, is Jinx is running out of land, and people own the land and want to develop the land. So then, our decision tonight, do we leave it residential? Or do we allow a hotel to move in or a convenience store or a gas station or any of those other things? Because unfortunately, Ms. Hall, I actually am on some land that was told by all my neighbors that it was a green belt, and then we developed it to my house. Made a bunch of people mad, but...
Say that again.
Their Realtor had told, the property I own, we own 24 acres just south of Brightling Village. Um, and everybody, all their Realtors told them that it was a green belt. And made quite a few people mad when we moved in there, but I think we're good. So the, uh, the deal is, is, you know, we're running out of land, so what do we do now? You know, do we allow something like, you know, Habitat for Humanity to build houses? Or do we open it up to commercial where there's a lot more traffic there? I guess that's our decision really tonight, is what do we do with that?
Will there be... I know I'm out of order, but I don't... But thank you. Um, will there be any, will there be any... If y'all do vote tonight, will there be any room for negotiation about the configuration of what I'm looking at right now?
Tonight, again, we're going to keep it on the agenda. Tonight, we are strictly addressing whether or not we change the land use map and what's been approved by the comprehensive plan. We're not looking at any other future proposals or any ideas of what could potentially go in there. So tonight, our only agenda item is, are we going to amend the land use map? So if that comes up, then there will be another, another meeting that are here. So we address that at that time.
But the gentleman was here talking about this.
You're talking about the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, again, the applicant was explaining what was proposed, and the proposal would be based upon whether or not the land use map is approved. We'll come back to you, Mr. Walker. Commissioners?
So can I ask, what was the thought process when it was changed from multifamily to the business park? How's that... What was the reasoning then?
When we were, uh, when the city staff was looking at land use designations, we were, um, we made, we made about five or six changes across the city. Um, some of them were related to industrial properties. And then this one was the area at 121st and Highway 75 on the, on both sides. The east side, closer to Mr. Bowman, may, uh, could possibly develop commercially. Maybe it won't ever, but it could. But on the west side, most certainly will develop north of Glenville in that full development area that would develop commercial. And at the time of the adoption, adoption of the comprehensive plan, we had said, "Let's do business park as a buffer between, um, the high intensity, because most likely there will be big box, big strip center, that type of thing, and you need some type of buffering." And the, instead of maybe all apartments, let's do business park. And then the comprehensive plan already had... Sorry, I'm getting this backwards. No, that is right. So we switched 111 from multifamily to business park and swapped that with 121st Street and gave it the apartments.
So which partial parcel has the deed restriction in?
The Habitat for Humanity parcel has deed restrictions. Yeah, I believe that there's deed restrictions on everything you see on that map.
I would expect the deed restrictions that they have probably came from the donor, uh, because when they're making a donation like that, they don't want it to go to certain types of things. I'd be curious to know, while it's off the record, I'd be curious to know what deed restrictions are in there just for developments.
Well, I think that is really relevant for kind of what might be possible in the future.
You could eliminate that list a lot on that basis.
You can ask him if he's willing to...
Okay, at this time, Mr. Walker, would you like to come up and address some of the questions? Operating initial comments?
So thank you. Yeah, per the deed restrictions, um, we would love to furnish you all this irrespective of, if you decide to keep it commercial, 90% of what Marseille read off is restricted. So it's, again, uh, that's not to say that commercial is not doable, but many of the specifics she was listed are in the restricted government. So hotels, convenience stores, dispensary, I mean, on and on and on. So, um, particularly on the, uh, nothing we've heard tonight is any different than any other area where we work. Uh, in fact, um, uh, we get a lot of this. I would just, uh, you know, just like to sort of restate, the families that we work with, they are only working with us because they have been priced out of the conventional avenue of buying a house. They are looked at as a loan risk by the bank. So we stand in the gap and provide financial assistance in the form of forgivable down payment assistance. That's all we're doing. We're just buying the mortgage now. The big piece of homeownership that I think everybody here can appreciate is wealth building. And a lot of the families that we work with, they're never going to be in the corner office, but they've got a solid blue-collar job. They're working in a, in a hospital. Uh, they're working in our schools. Um, but they're, they're going to have incremental gains over time, and they're not going to have big jumps in income. So, um, that's, really, it's the financing piece. And that's why we've gone to great lengths to improve both the quality, the style of the homes we're building. I, I hate it for the former volunteers. That's why we largely moved away from using volunteers. Um, the, uh, our level of quality and workmanship has increased dramatically. And so we're kind of an oddball in the Habitat ecosystem. And so at 80 homes a year, we'll be in the top five of all habitats in the country as far as the residential market. And I think someone said it, but Tulsa County has about 5,000. We're short 5,000 affordable units. And I'm not talking Housing Authority. I'm talking Section 8. Just that people cannot purchase a home. And right now, you know, housing stock, obviously, is beginning to go up with interest rates. More stuff is sitting. But again, with interest rates where they are, you've got kind of the teeter-totter problem of working at a affordable payment. So anyway, that's, uh, that's where we are. Were there any other... Were there any other specifics? We'll be happy to provide the restrictive covenants some of the Marseille.
So if this stays commercial, what's Habitat do with this money?
Well, we'll have to find, well, first, we have to go back to the Warren Foundation and be released from our agreement. And then the second part of it, we'll have to list it. It will be sold, but it'll have to be something specific that's not on the deed restrictions. So again, we've had interest in it since we've acquired it. Some of the uses are permissible, some are not. And so again, it's a prime piece of real estate and we were happy to, happy to take possession of it.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Okay, at this time, we'll bring it back again to the commissioners. What's your pleasure? We need a motion or?
They can, yeah, either. Well, you have to make a motion.
We have to make a motion. We need a motion and on the questions.
Just to mention it, this is a prime piece of real estate. I mean, this looks like an interesting project, absolutely. It is possible to remove deed restrictions if our parties can agree to that. So, I mean, perhaps it has a higher value if those are removed. I mean, if they don't, that's their choice and it's just a restriction on the property. But that's possible. Just wanted to mention it.
We need a motion.
I make a motion, we deny the language pulled up.
One second.
PA 22 dash 25.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Walker? Did you agree enough?
Yes.
Did everybody?
Yes.
Did you agree?
Yes.
Yes. Having passed the motion to deny the request, just a quick comment to all of you that are present. What Habitat for Humanity has is what Oral Roberts used to call a one-eyed chicken. You guys can look that up on the internet. It's an interesting story. And I would just recommend that perhaps since he's here, the only way as residents that you're going to protect that piece of land is if you actually buy it yourself. Anything that is not included in the deed restrictions that they received and anything that's included in the current zoning for that, somebody else can come in and develop it. With the numbers that are here, if you've got an HOA present, perhaps you can do a land swap. Maybe you can buy it from Habitat for Humanity that could utilize the money in other projects. And you can decide as a group of residents what you'd like to do. Just a personal observation and suggestion. It's not an official planning commission recommendation. That's my caveat. Okay. So do we have any other new business? Any planning updates? No planning updates. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Don't get a motion.
That's right. At this time, we will adjourn. Thank you for coming out this evening.